Kids wanted to pull the plug last year when there was no state tax. Yeah, that's right. They wanted to kick the plug out of the wall.
I'd say on average.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the work session of the Cuyahoga County Council. And we are here for the purpose of discussing matters that will come before or that will be on the agenda at our 6:00 meeting. We found that this works a little better to give us an opportunity to sort of have a committee of the whole and get information from various staff people and facilitates our 6:00 meeting. Do we need to call the roll?
Yes, Madam President. Calling the roll, Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Simon.
I'm here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Present.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
In the interest of facilitating our discussions this afternoon, I thought I would quickly, is there anybody that has any miscellaneous committee reports before we go on to Item Two, which discussion of our formal agenda?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Madam President, I'm working in coordination with Councilman Germana from the Intergovernmental Committee to create a subcommittee that would help convey the concerns of Cuyahoga County to the state legislature in the budget process. And we want to get about four or five citizens who could be effective in helping with this on the committee. So I would just ask any of my colleagues if you have suggestions as to who might be good people to approach on that to let me know. And Madam President, the second thing I'd like to put on the table is that during our early transition work at Cleveland State University, we talked about the importance of education and that the roles that this council could play in terms of the scholarship program, workforce development, early childhood education, and so on, and that there probably should be a subcommittee. And it's been mentioned that it could be a subcommittee under economic development because of how important education is to economic development, or it could be a subcommittee under human resources. So I just want to put that back on the table, and we should give some thought as to how we want to constitute that. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Miller, I did have conversations with Mr. Fitzgerald, I don't know, Friday I think it was, and he has appointed a gentleman named Justin Bibb, who is a, will be his specialist for education, and they have some very specific plans. So I thought that we would interface with Mr. Bibb and figure out something from there. And he could, you know, kind of facilitate our activities, but whatever committee that the group thinks, I don't know, economic development or whatever, but we do need to address that. All right, any other committee reports? Mr. Schron?
Yeah, I'll just comment, I think, Madam President, but with the Commission for Economic Development having its next meeting scheduled for the 23rd, we will then start immediately moving into the creation of the economic development plan for the county. If there's a, if it would generate as a logical place for the education to be coming out of that, then I would obviously bring that to the attention of the council. If it looks as though the commission sees that role falling into a different part within the executive, then it probably would fall into a different committee also within our council. So it should naturally start to percolate here in the next, I would say, month, month and a half, as the, because we have an obligation to have that plan back to this committee, the committee and the council by June 1st. So it's going to be moving at a pretty fast pace.
Yeah, I had suggested to Mr. Fitzgerald that these work sessions are starting to fill up in terms of people who are going to be presenters, that we could have Mr. Bibb come in and give us a presentation about what his expectations of the job will be and the things he'll be doing. I think from my understanding that he's going to be working with local college presidents and et cetera, so that would probably be beneficial to us so that we wouldn't duplicate the effort. All right, any, yes, Mr. Germana.
Madam Chair. Last week when we, I guess it was the confirmation hearing, we were talking about when the Intergovernmental should meet, and since four out of five members from the Finance Committee and four out of five members from the Economic Development Committee were all on the same committee, we decided that it should be the same day as either Finance and Economic Development. So it's going to be the hour before Economic Development, which is the opposite week of the council meeting. The Economic Development's at 3:00, Intergovernmental will be at 2:00, because four out of five people won't have to make, you know, a separate trip.
All right, thank you.
Madam President.
Madam President, we actually meet on the week of, of the same week. So just for your reference on that, Mr. Germana.
Been back and forth, so I was trying to graph it out, but I knew, do know four out of five from both of those committees, so it's going to be right before Economic Development.
Okay, any other committee reports? Let's move on to the agenda. We have an eight-page agenda. I know I have a number of questions on various aspects of it, and starting with Item 8. And what I would think is, council persons want to go down the list and inquire as to any of these items, you know, in numerical order. Any discussion on them? Or do you want to move on to some specific area? I have some questions on some of the things on the engineer, but is anything ahead of the agenda that anybody has questions on? These are probably very generic questions that are probably obvious to those who work in this area. So let me start, like, okay, let's start with, we go to Item 12 on the agenda. Number 0042, we enter into an agreement with the bid dates. Does this cost us any money at this point?
0042, no. This is just asking for permission to cooperate with the City of North Royalton for Royalton Road reconstruction.
Okay, and I see that eventually the county only is paying $488,000, and the rest of it's picked up by federal funds. This is my question, let me see if I can phrase it properly. In a number of these, the county sets aside, say, for instance, a million dollars for a project, and then the bids come in, say, at $750,000. So this other amount of money is encumbered or set aside somewhere, and then subsequently usually they'll come in a little bit like with more money. When you encumber that money, what is the effect of that on the county budget? So that money is encumbered not being used, and so a lot of these, the money was encumbered and set aside for maybe like a couple of years. Is that a logical question?
Yes, and I guess it's more a budget question if we have a budget person, but the money goes back into the pot, basically, and it gets redistributed to other projects, would allow for other projects to move up sooner, faster.
Like, okay, on number 47, you allocate a million for, and then they ultimately only spent a million, $183,000. So, you know, that money was encumbered all that time, and it could have been used for other projects. So is there a way to more accurately determine what you're going to spend, or is that unrealistic?
I wouldn't say it's unrealistic. The goal when we do engineers' estimates is to get them as close as possible. We know the last few years that because of the bad economy, it's kind of a bitter owner's market, that the prices have been coming in relatively cheaper, and we adjust to some extent for those lower bids, but at the same time, we don't want to be, you know, too aggressive with our bids. So we try to do our best to get our bids as close as possible.
Can I move on to number 56? We have an assignment of, it was a, we were asking for amendment to a contract to assign the contract from North America LLC to Hill International.
Yeah.
And that was effective, not last July. There was no additional funds, but then I think there was on the other paperwork, it said it was like another $20,000. And why are we doing these assignments?
Yeah, these are just name changes. The company actually changed names, so we're providing a new contract in the new name of the company. And there's two of those like that, 0056 and 0057. It's the same company.
So why are they coming back? I mean, that was like last July, they changed their name.
I think the original contract was last July, and they just recently changed their name. Is that right, Lenora? I believe that's the case.
Number 59, there's an increase in money. Resolution to amend the contract for this reconstruction of the bridge, change the scope of the services, and for additional funds, not to exceed. So this is a $20,000 increase.
I'm sorry, which one are you looking at?
I'm on 59. Same thing with 58, there's increases in these.
I have those as authorizing contracts. One with Euthenix is 58, and this is a contract, 59 is a contract with CH2M Hill. This is to provide the design services for the two particular projects.
So you're changing them, or what do you, I don't understand.
No, we're asking permission to hire these consultants.
So what do these consultants do?
They do the design for the reconstruction of the roads. The Euthenics for the third phase of Pleasant Valley and Bagley, and that's the design services is a not-to-exceed price of $229,000. And then 0059 is asking permission to hire CH2M Hill, which is a design consulting company to do the reconstruction of Ridge Road, and that's at a cost of $117,578.
Does anybody have any other questions? I'd like, Mr. Greenspan?
Yeah, let me, Madam President, let me just say, this is a general comment I wanted to make, and I can attest to the quality of CH2M Hill's work. This was actually the company back in Sandy Springs, Georgia, that we, the city outsourced all of its services to, which has caused the city to be highly ranked by Forbes and Fortune and Money as one of the best cities in the country. So they're top-quality.
National firm.
They're phenomenal, just phenomenal. I have some other questions about other issues, but that was the only comment I had on those two items.
Go ahead, if you have the questions.
On Resolution 46, I noticed in the financial information, the funding source is left blank, yet it's a 600, looks like it's a 600, do I read that, a $606,000? Final cost of the project's almost $607,000. Where's the funding coming from?
46 is the accepting of the construction, the construction is done, and I guess the specifics, I'll ask Mike Dever if he can expand on that, but this particular resolution is the accepting of the construction, so the construction is done.
Yeah, because there's a difference of $267,000 in this particular one.
Good evening, council members.
As the Director had pointed out, it is the acceptance of that contract. One second, let me pull it up.
Yeah, now, this is one, this was estimated at $916,000. They've got a contract for $606,000, and the work was actually performed for $647,000. So that's $267,000, so it's kind of like held in escrow, right?
It's a reduction, but those funds ultimately come from out of that specific sewer district.
Okay.
That's what helps pay for it. There was a loan taken on that project. That's tied in with our other issue that's going on with Cooks.
Right, yeah, that's what brought it to my attention. So is this, once again, my question as it relates to these folks is, is this, is this that same project where we're going to have to come back before council to amortize the payments over 20 years?
Yeah, that's the one where we're working on an arrangement now to find some relief for those people to tap into the new sewer. This is closing the project out.
So this was, this was the million dollars that came out of the EPA to fund it initially?
Yeah.
And so this is the release of the funds that we received from the EPA to satisfy the contract, and then the collection from the residents to repay the loan? Is that how this is working?
That's to satisfy the contract with this contractor. We're finished, we're completed with the contractor themselves.
So there are no other costs that will be passed on to the residents other than what's already been disclosed?
That's correct.
Okay. Is it customary, under the Financial Information Section, for there not to be any funding sources explained, or was this just a, under the Novus Agenda page? So it would be customary? Okay. Okay.
Not sure if the clerk clarified that for you.
That's okay, I'm probably better off.
We left it there specifically with that.
Okay, I have no further questions on that matter.
Mr. Gallagher, do you have a question?
Regarding 2011-0051. And maybe you don't know this, how over-budget is that Juvenile Justice Center as we speak? Do you know that?
Actually, I'm going to ask Jay Ross to discuss that.
I would not say the project is over-budget. The project originally started out, actually, as just a detention center back in like '04, '05, and then it was added to. That's when the court then decided to move, so the original estimates reflect a far smaller building. In fact, there was not even the anticipation. I mean, the press has played this out.
I mean, we can wordsmith any way we want, but the bottom line is, this thing's over-budget, and I know it, and you know it, and I just want to know how much.
I don't know that I would necessarily agree with the word "over-budget," though. The scope has changed significantly over the term of the project, and that's why. I understand someone could say that, but there's been significant changes over a number of years. The original detention center was 150 beds. The juvenile court, for example, then came to the commission, said we want to build 180-bed facility, so 30 additional beds were built. That was not in the original budget. That added millions of dollars to the project. I mean, we're putting together a significant detailed informational packet on the project budget because we are coming to fruition, but I wouldn't necessarily say it's over-budget. The final number that's being talked about is $189 million is the cap. Right now, we've appropriated $184 million, and we do not know, from a construction standpoint, we don't expect to spend any more than that amount.
And where does it start out at? Before the justices decided to add 180 beds?
The number that comes to my mind, there was about $165 to $170 million when all issues were considered, and then on top of that, there were a number of work scope changes, of which those 30 beds were part of that. And that's why, it's not a simple answer. We're putting together a packet of information. And I'm not trying to get around the question. It isn't a simple question.
Believe me, I've watched this thing go, and I know how courts, all due respect, spend money, that, you know, they have no business spending, but they have the power of the pen as opposed to the power of reasonable thought sometimes. And now we're going to have a palace sitting over there on Quincy Avenue that will not be fully implemented as far as all those beds, correct? When it opens, is everything going to be working over there? Are we going to have enough staff for everything?
My understanding is it will be fully staffed, and all beds will be operational.
See, I keep hearing differently.
Well, my understanding is they're full at East 22nd.
Yeah, okay. So anyhow, so could we get into, and I'll look forward to your novel. I don't want to jump on you, but, I mean, you know, we've, you know, this county has a tendency to just keep spending. Marble floors, this and that, you know, I mean, you know. Anyhow, can we get to the crosswalk over a city street that seemingly we're paying for? Or the, or sharing costs for?
Which number is that?
Just give me an explanation on that, and why is not Cleveland incurring all these costs?
Cleveland is going to incur some of the costs. Basically, the county went to them, how the parking lot is designed, is there's entries across the street from the Juvenile Justice Center, and the anticipation, unfortunately, is that people aren't going to always walk down to the end of the street and go along the crosswalks at the streets, like at East 93rd and Quincy. They're going to cross in the middle of the road, and the speed limit there is 35 miles per hour. The concern is purely safety, and the request of the project management team in the court was to put a crosswalk in the middle of 93, in the middle of Quincy, about halfway down, so they can walk right across from the parking lot onto the entrance, so they wouldn't have to walk all the way down, because the concern is they're not going to, and at some point, someone may get hurt.
So the project manager and the court, again, is requesting?
This came from both the project management team and the court for safety purposes.
And the court had a traffic study to justify this change? Or they just want it?
The court did not.
The court wants what it wants?
I wouldn't put this on the court, I would put this on the project manager team. It's a safety factor. There's a concern about somebody getting hurt, especially because kids are coming to court, and we just want to make sure from a safety standpoint, we think that the expense is reasonable to assure the safety of the public.
See, it just, it just seems odd to me that you get deep into these multi-multi-million-dollar contracts, and now we're throwing these ups and extras. And I understand safety, but where was the project manager at the beginning of this? And why aren't they eating this cost, along with the city of Cleveland? Or Cleveland, it's their road, people are going 40, that's, they should be getting ticketed. That's your safety right there.
Cleveland has come back and said they cannot afford to do this. They've been very clear on that. If the county wants to do this, it's on the county to do this. And the project manager team felt that this was a safety factor, and they wanted to proceed in this manner, and they recommended it.
So then you would do a safety, you would do a, you would do a traffic flow study to justify the alteration of the traffic light in the crosswalk, and it's incumbent upon the city to do it then? Why are we incurring those costs?
On day one, when that facility opens up, if somebody gets hurt, we would view it as he comes back to bite the county.
If somebody gets hit crossing the street, it's the city of Cleveland, they're on notice that there's a problem there. This is a city issue. See, once again, everybody bends and grabs their ankles on dollars and cents in these budgets, and, you know, this has got to stop somewhere. And I'm not jumping on the court, but just because they said they want a crosswalk there, well, take it out of their budget. I mean, you know, this, we have to start being realistic with the money at Cuyahoga County. And as I said, I'll wait for the study and how not over-budget that this palace is over there, but it will be. And I don't think it's going to be fully implementation, implemented with all the beds being open, but well, that's not your concern. I think you best, as you could, answer my question.
To follow up on Mr. Gallagher's question, this unforeseen condition cash allowance, is that a, is that a provision in these contracts?
That's essentially to cover contingencies. If the money is needed, it's spent; if it's not needed, it's not spent. For example, if they're doing, if the parking equipment, for example, would cost $5,000 more, they could use that contingency. It has to be approved by county project management staff before it's spent. If it's not spent, it goes back to the county.
Can you give me an example of something that was needed that wasn't spent?
Actually, there are several change orders, there are several closeouts of contracts on this project that will come back with allowances unspent.
Example?
Well, it's just a matter of, a contract might have a half-million dollar, you could have a $10-million contract with a 5% contingency, was a half-million dollars, and they may have only needed $300,000, for example, so when the contract gets closed out, $200,000 doesn't get spent by the vendor, just refers back to the county.
Madam President, I have a question, please.
Yeah, Mr. Greenspan.
On the same item, if we voted no on this, what happens? We don't have to vote yes.
The crosswalk would not be done. It has not been done. I mean, this, none of this work will be done until it's approved.
Madam President, can I ask you another question, please, as it relates?
Yes, Mr. Gallagher, Ms. Greenspan.
To general items on the agenda, I understand there's a backlog of workflow, and that's why these items are before us for immediate passage. At what point in the future do we expect not to have these immediate, immediately effective items, and at what point will they be, will they go through the committee process? How many projects are pending are like this, and then when will we stop seeing this? And obviously, this is some under Public Works, this is some under other agendas, but I'm just, you're standing at the mic right now.
And I think, as we start catching up, and I don't know if we have an exact point in time where that happens, but, you know, our goal is to spend more time to be able to analyze these and to have the three readings where necessary. You know, if we could start tomorrow, I would, I would, I would accept that, but I don't, I don't think that's the case, because we are catching up on.
Can we get a project list of what's in the, I think we asked for this once before, didn't we? Can we get a project list of what's in the hopper? And that at least give us some frame of reference, because there are 20, almost 23 or 22 items that are before us for immediate, you know, to be passed immediately. I'd like to know when it's, when it's going to stop and go through the process, because we don't want to continue to vet this out without the committee's hearing it first.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald.
As you know, we've made that offer to council leadership recently, that we won't submit anything unless it's at the council's discretion if you want to do it at this point on an expedited basis. So the short answer to your question is, when will it stop? It has stopped. If you don't want to pass them, don't pass them. If you want to send them to committee, send them to committee. We're not bringing things to you anymore that have to be passed now, this evening, that has stopped.
Okay, well, Madam President, to Executive Fitzgerald, I'm not, I'm just asking just generally, what's the list look like? That's all. I mean, I understand.
The list is done. There isn't, I mean, there isn't, we're not going to be coming to you saying you must pass it this evening without a, without a council meeting if you want to. There is no, it's done, as far as I'm concerned. The first couple of meetings, we had ones that had to be passed in order for, in order for there not to be an interruption services. That's over. So, you know, as much as, or as much or as little committee review as you want at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Just to reiterate what Mr. Fitzgerald is saying, they did, in fact, his staff did, in fact, relay that information, and after speaking with you and Mr. Brady, we determined that we should probably go ahead and at least put it on the agenda as, you know, expeditiously as possible in order to get these items passed. So it was truly your decision in order to do that, and if there are any items that you felt needed to be held at this time for further information, then that was the game plan for this evening.
Yeah, we recommend that be placed on the agenda so that everyone on the council would have an opportunity to review them and see them, because other than that, we wouldn't have an opportunity to discuss all these matters with each person on the council. So this is the only way that we can have an opportunity for everybody on the panel to see all these items. Mr. Gallagher?
Madam President, what's the timeline on this crosswalk? I mean, when's the Justice Center opening up?
Clearly, given the weather, they're not going to start construction until that timeframe or later, so I mean, it is not a decision that needs to be made tonight. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
Well, I don't want to say it's not going to happen, but I'd like to further review this, so if you don't mind, I think, where we're going to kick this committee, if you can, Monday at 11:00 a.m., we're going to have a Public Safety Committee meeting. If we could go through this a little bit more, to be fair to the others in the audience, I'd just like to get a little bit more information, and, you know, if I've been a little aggressive with you, I apologize. It's just, I mean, this, this is a very expensive building, and when we start going over city streets, I'd like to make sure that, you know, the county is, if we, if there is pay coming from our side, I want to make sure, just because Cleveland says they don't have enough money, you know, they can justify that to us.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Mr. Simon?
Madam President, the Justice Affairs Committee is going to meet, I believe, the last Thursday of this month, and maybe as the first endeavor, we can have a comprehensive overview of the Juvenile Justice Center, for those interested, to find out. overview of the Juvenile Justice Center, for those interested, to, to find out all about it from beginning and to where we are now. So I'll get with the details on the committee members.
Right.
President.
Anything for, I, I have one question, number forty-nine, and it, the motion is authorized in the Director of the Department of Public Works and the County Engineer. Ms. Tewan has been nominated, but has not yet been confirmed, and my question is, is she performing these tasks without the confirmation, or what? I mean, is she going to point interim and then subject to our confirmation, or does she have authority to act without our confirmation?
Well, as you know, she's, until they're confirmed, they act in an interim basis, and anyone that I have nominated for a position that hasn't been confirmed yet, just like Sheriff Reed or, or.
So you have paperwork to show that they're interim appointment?
I'm considering to be of interim status, if you'd like some paperwork on it.
Yeah, but I think there should be, I think that there should be some written authority or something to say that they are actually the interim person, because they are, they have, they're not acting with authority until you appoint them interim, and then we confirm them.
I understand, I understand your point. I mean, and I, we can get you that paperwork, that's fine.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. I'd just like to welcome the students here. This is Ohio Youth Voices, and they're here from Gin Academy, John Hay, John Adams, and MLK. And Mr. Charney is in charge of them. And thank you, thank you for coming, I'm glad to have you here. Students, there is no cell phone use, there is no texting while this meeting is on. All texting stops when you walk in that door. There's no one that you have to contact while you're in this meeting that is so urgent. If so, you can leave. You don't have to tell me that, well, I got to tell my parents. Your parents are nowhere you are, so no texting, all right?
Thank you, Judge.
I revert to my former role, but.
I'm going to throw my phone out.
Yes, Mr. Greenspan.
A question, are these items, then, is, is it the intent, then, I would presume of the President, to send various items on the agenda to committee? Or are we going to consider these this evening?
Well, I, I was going to go through the agenda in the regular meeting, because we can't take any official action at this point, so when we go through the, at the regular meeting, then whatever motions to refer to committee will be considered at that point.
Very good, thank you.
Okay? All right. Anything else from, from Ms. Tewan or from the Department of Public Works until we move on to?
Madam President, if I, if I might clear up one, one thing in regard to, to Mr. Gallagher's comments in regard to the crosswalk. Traditionally, when a developer comes in, and we'll use the Juvenile Justice Center, we'll, we'll imagine them as a developer, when they come to a municipality or ODOT, and they, they need to make adjustments to the roadway, whether it's widening, whether it's turn lanes, whether it's a crosswalk, it's usually the responsibility of that developer for those costs. So left-hand turn lanes into a shopping center, the developer usually picks up those costs. So in the case of the crosswalk, if the Juvenile Justice Center is a development in this case, and the city is requesting that crosswalk is, is being put in, it would be up to the developer to put those in. Just, just to clarify that, if you want to put things into perspective and, and how we work our roadway improvements and the fundings for that, if that helps.
Madam President?
Yes.
Before they go, a question about the allocation of funds out of the, the tax fund, the license tax funds to repair and reconstruct roads. How is it determined which roads are going to get reconstructed or repaired? Is there a scale?
Every road in the county has a pavement condition rating, a PCR. We usually pick the worst case. We go to the city and, and asked if they would like to do a project in their municipality based on the condition of it. So we, we try to pick the worst roads and, and repair those roads based on that.
And when do you set forth that rating? In the spring of every year? If you know?
It's, and, and I'm not exactly sure of the lesser traveled routes, but at, at ODOT, every year, we try to get all the state routes, we try to get a revised PCR. We can predict in the future best, based on degradation rates, I have a hard time with that word, you know, what the condition will be in the future, but depending on the harshness of the winter, that sometimes accelerates it. So we try and get them every year on the, on the state and interstate systems. Counties, I believe they're the same. I don't know with residential streets, the lesser traveled streets, what, what the, the rate is, but that, that's in conjunction between ODOT, the County Engineers' Office, and NOACA are, are the keepers of all those, those pavement condition ratings.
Madam President? I have a follow-up on, on that question. How is it determine the percentage of what the county pays and what the participating city pays for the road improvement?
It's usually a standardized rate, whether it's eighty-twenty or ninety-ten, what the distribution is.
I noticed we did one at our last meeting that was eighty-twenty, so that's kind of the standard.
That's normal.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier, you were, you were looking for a little help, I think, out there from the, the folks in, in the budget side, and I, I see that we do have that for the encumbered issue, and it's my, my assumption is that part of the encumbering is to take care of contingencies that are unforeseeable, like weather, subterranean issues that cannot be foreseen, and, and when we end up with monies that are over the, the encumbered amounts, it's to cover contingencies that, that are very difficult on construction projects, especially, especially in areas where some of these things are subterranean for, could be down there for, having done a brownfield, you find all kinds of gremlins sometimes that, that are very hard to foresee, and, and perhaps for the benefit of the audience, the encumbered issue could be at least addressed out there.
Do you know the question?
I think so.
Okay.
Good evening, Matt Rubino, Office of Budget Management, Madam Chairman, Members of Council. I think the question was, we have an encumbrance related to a project, what happens if there is excess free balance, if you will, and then encumbrance? It's, I think it's basically a three-step process. One touches upon what Councilman Schron had mentioned, the project has to be certified that it's, it's finished, so any of these contingencies would have already been identified and addressed. So then you have the true ending balance or free balance of that, that encumbrance related to that contract. This is work that's being contracted out to another company. So once you've made that certification and checked off all those, those boxes, the next step is a request from the agency, whether it's engineer, development, what have you, they request that encumbrance to be decertified or liquidated. So there's recognition that project's complete, we'll go ahead and decertify or cancel the remaining balance of that encumbrance tied to that contract. And then the last step is just following up with OBM, and we will reduce the appropriation that was in that free balance. So if there's a two-hundred thousand dollar free balance, the encumbrance piece, which was a lien on those dollars, is decertified, it's taken off the books, and the last step is just decert, or reducing the appropriation, two-hundred thousand dollars that is associated with that free balance. And then the project is complete, the budget's closed out, and then you can go back, and anytime you'll, you'll have history on, on the project and project expenditures and how it finished up.
Mr. Miller?
Madam Chairman, to Mr. Rubino, in that scenario that you just outlined, would that reduction in appropriation then come to the County Council in one of those items that you send to us every two weeks about the budget adjustments?
Yes, Councilman, it would. It'd be in the first category, it'd be a reduction to appropriation. It'd come with the corresponding narrative and tying it to that project. And we, we lead up to the agencies to work through that three-step process, and then as they're, they're requesting for us to get that item on the agenda to effect that change to the budget, because it is a, a change to the approved budget, and we work with them on getting that on and kind of monitoring projects that are being closed out and if there's going to be a need to reduce appropriation.
Yes, Mr. Schwan.
Thank you, Madam President. Do we do any kind of aging as far as what length of time, what life there's still left in, in those unencumbered funds, or those encumbered funds that are still sitting out there that could be utilized for other purposes, and do we start to do some factoring and push to, to recover those back in, into our budgetary process?
Councilman Schron, speaking on behalf of OBM, we do kind of a semi-annual review of encumbrances, whether they're for operating contracts or projects. We'll just use some of the reporting provided to us by the General Accounting Division, and we do our own review, and we'll identify things that look like they're aged out, maybe a year old, especially on the operating side, and what we'll do is make a recommendation, identify those, provide them to the agency, and then work to decertify, and then reduce appropriation if we're needed.
As a follow-up, can we identify how much those funds are at this point in time that are out there for contracts that are over a year, that would fall into that category, so we could have some idea as how much of, of funds that perhaps could be coming back in?
Councilman Schron, we can work with General Accounting and, and provide some information on that as a, as a follow-up. We will, just as a note, on the twenty-second agenda, we will be requesting the appropriation of free balances, and these are related to ongoing contracts, grants, and projects. In that mix, which is an amount that's provided by General Accounting, are things that are over a year old, a lot of them are related to grants and projects. We usually undertake a review, at least on our side, and a review of, of the operating encumbrances as a part of our mid-year review, and try to find places to kind of weed out the stuff that's been over a year, doesn't serve an active contract anymore.
Madam President, on, in, in a business scenario, we would be potentially playing the float, I guess, so to, so to speak, on projects. Is there any way we can be utilizing those funds, knowing that they'd be, probably is a continuous rolling forward of those monies, that we could actually almost get some dual mileage out of?
Councilman, I think it would depend on the funding source. If it is tied to a, a specific project, then it would fall back to the agency. So for example, if it's County Engineer, they're going to look and see their funding sources, the individual, the gasoline fund and the, the two title funds, whether or not there's actual dollars behind that appropriation, because really what it is, is just the, the ability or approval to spend funds. So the question is, A, does it really have true dollars behind it, and B, does it fit somewhere within their ongoing capital plan? On the operating side, it's more or less, if we identify it, and the agency agrees, yeah, this is an age type of encumbrance, will they certify it, reduce the appropriation? That's a separate thing, though, in terms of what they're actually going to spend. Yeah, we can reduce their projected expenditure for the year if they had included that, but if they hadn't included that encumbrance, then it's really doing some housekeeping and cleanup, which is still a good thing.
All right, are there any other questions on these, the Public Works or the Engineers' Office? We have a number of items, the following items deal with Health and Human Services, and then we have a number of representatives there, so I think we can move on to, actually, I had a question, number sixty, on residential substance abuse treatments. Does anybody know where, where that goes, or to what facility that goes? Noctis five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars for residential substance abuse treatment services.
Excuse me, Madam President, I'm Joseph Gauntner, Deputy Chief of Staff for Human Services. This is actually an item presented by the court, not by the Human Services Departments of the county. As I understand it, though, it is a funding agreement whereby the courts would receive funds from the Alcohol and Drug Board to pay for treatment services.
Okay, so these are people probably referred to probation or something.
To the Community Corrections Board, I believe, is identified in the detail.
I mean, if it's going to a court, I'm sure they're using it properly. Isn't that right, Mr. Gallagher?
Madam Council President?
Yes.
I was, in terms of the, there's quite, there is quite an agenda for, for Health and Human Services.
Yeah, we need, right.
And what I'd like to recommend to the Chair is that Mr. Warner, he brought up to deal with the entire package, so that we don't just sort of jump around between
Right, that, I was going to suggest that.
All the different possible discussions here.
Do you want to proceed with this as Chair of Human Services? Do you want to proceed with the, I was going to say, direct examination? Any question on this, on these areas, or do you want me to continue?
I'm not sure what's appropriate. It's a work session, so I guess we can.
Yeah.
Glad to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady has worked quite extensively on this in, in preparation as Chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Mr. Warner?
Mr. Warner, you're welcome to sit.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I will, I will also point out.
I didn't bring my lawyer, Madam President.
Okay.
I got a really good.
I will point out that, that Ms. Forkus was here at the last meeting and gave us a, a lot of background on, on some of these, these issues. And, and for the students, these are allocations of money for residential facilities for youth, children that are in custody of, of the county and, and need some specials, some, some type of services. So this might be of something of interest for you.
Thank you. Now I'm trying to get this thing to stay on, okay. Madam Chairman, Mr. Warner, I, we began this discussion for the council last Tuesday, and since then, we've had further discussions, but I'd like to give you a chance to continue that presentation that we started last Tuesday.
Sure.
And there's actually quite a bit of urgency around, around these items, and they are big-ticket items, so.
Sure, I would be happy to. Thank you, Madam President, and Chairman Brady. I'm Rick Warner from the County Office of Health and Human Services, and we are here, actually, the, the first set of items that I will address are two eleven dash sixty-three, and these are the Department of Children and Family Service residential and service contracts for two thousand and eleven. And as the President and Mr. Brady suggested, we were here last week with Ms. Forkus, my colleague from the Department of Children and Family Services is with us, as are representatives of many of the providers that are the subject of these contracts. These are the residential placement and services contracts for the Department of Children and Family Services. They are done on an annual basis, and we had the opportunity, Ms. Forkus, Joe Gauntner, and I, to meet with Mr. Brady and Ms. Conwell last week, and there are new roles as Chair and Vice Chair of the Human Services Committee, to begin not only to further brief them on these contracts, but also to talk about the cycle of contracts that Human Services has that, that the administration will be bringing to you over the course of the year. There are obviously lots of contracts from Human Services, many of which will be subject to County Executive Fitzgerald's approval, because they'll be smaller.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Warner, please excuse me, I'm very, I apologize. Madam President, to Mr. Warner, could you, could you please slow down?
Okay, sorry.
And.
I'll be happy to.
Project your voice.
I, thank you, Mr. Chair. These are the contracts that the Department of Children and Family Services uses to serve kids, both children, both residentially and in outpatient services, and there are thirty-two providers here who we have worked with on, for, on many, many years, for many, many years. When we met last week with Councilman Brady and Councilwoman Conwell to begin our planning with them for the work of their committee, one of the questions that they had for us was, why is both the administration and County Council getting these rather large contracts, and very numerous contracts, in a, in a big pile at the beginning of the year? And the answer to that is that we have always historically done these contracts on an annual calendar year basis. So every year, we were asking the county commissioners, back under that form of government, to approve these contracts early in a given year for that year. Councilman Brady asked me to pull some statistics from the past, and so with the assistance of the Department of Children and Family Services, we pulled statistics regarding the passage of these contracts in past years. In two thousand and ten, the commissioners passed thirty-one of thirty-five contracts in January, and four in February. In two thousand and nine, we passed twenty-nine contracts in February, and in two thousand and eight, we passed forty contracts in February. I say that to say that these are contracts, obviously, to, to serve kids and families in the current year, and that's why we are before you and asking for your approval. As I think we discussed last week, when we presented these in early January to the County Executive, he had, like you, many questions about the way we contract with these providers, the levels of care that the Department of Children and Family Services uses to serve kids, and to decide what kind of care and with what provider to lodge the responsibility for that care. And, and so we answered, or attempted to answer, and I think somewhat successfully, most of the administration's questions, but they challenged us, as you have challenged us, to look at ways that we can introduce more competition and more, more of an open process to the work of, of the department in contracting for these contracts. And so at the County Executive's request, we put these contracts into place for a nine month period, and Deb Forkus and I and others will be working with the Office of Procurement and Diversity to establish a, a method to try to introduce more competition to these contracts and their procurement in the future. But. But County Executive Fitzgerald, understanding the importance of having services in place for children and families, permitted us to go forward and bring these contracts to you. You obviously, last week, had a series of questions for us on how we use these contracts and who we worked with, and Councilman Brady and Councilwoman Conwell continued those discussions with us last week. We have tried to answer all of both County Executive Fitzgerald's questions, as well as your own, in the past week, with the hopes that we could get passage of these contracts tonight, because there are many, many providers who are relying upon the fact that the kids that they've been serving in January, they can bill us in February for those services. I will say that all the providers that we've talked to about this understand that in the transition from the county commissioner form of government to the county executive and county council, that there would be transitional issues and potential delays, because you all are being asked to consider things that you've not had to consider in the past. But having said that, we are hoping that we've been able to answer sufficient questions over the last week or 10 days to make you feel comfortable to pass these contracts this evening. So I'd be answered, I'd be happy to try to answer specific questions, but that's the framework within which we bring them to you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Questions from the committee?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Warner, I'm looking at these, the evaluations on the various agencies.
Yes, ma'am.
How is it undertaken, and what's the net effect of them?
I will generally say, and then if Ms. Forkus has additional comments, she can come up and join me, for the last five or six years, the commissioners ask us to evaluate on an annual basis in a written form attached to the agendas, the work of the providers that we work with. This is true in the case of all of the departments that we work with, not just the Department of Children and Family Services. So the contracting unit within each department evaluates the work of the provider and attempts to rate it in those five broad areas. As you will see, that there's a variety of ratings, there are times in the past, and I'm not suggesting that that is the case here, where we've brought back below average or just average contracts, because we believe that they provide a unique service, and we continue to try to work with the provider to improve their performance. But if I missed pieces that you would like to add?
Yeah, there's a couple that have average, and like, for instance, for the administrative function, there's like some that have 60 or 70, and I found one of them, they had a 40. I mean, what's, what is there, you get a 40 and somebody else gets a 70, I mean, what do you do to that person, or that agency, rather?
Pardon me. Deb Forkus from Children and Family Services. There is a framework which the unit that does these evaluations, they have very specific questions and very specific things that they look at in relation to this contract provider, mostly focused around quality control issues. And when they do their evaluation, then they have a rating scale, I didn't bring it today, but I'd be more than happy to send it to you, where there are points that are rated per area, and that's how they determine, by looking at things like the reports that are sent in, the quarterly reports that are due, there's a whole list of items that they look at. And then from there, they compile all the scores, and then there's cutoffs on how they determine what's above average, what's average, what's below average, et cetera. If we have a provider that's below average, generally what we do is corrective action, where we will meet with the organization, and we will lay out long before the evaluation, we generally know these things long before the evaluation annually. And what we do is we do what we call PIPs, which are action plans, and we lay out things that they have to focus on where they are below average. And then there are some times that we may put a hold on an organization and not send children to that organization until they have brought up whatever their, you know, problem is to a satisfactory way for us.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Warner, you mentioned the schedule for the last three years where these contracts, in one case, had been mostly approved in January, but in the other two years, most or all of them were approved in February. So would I read it correctly that if we pass these ordinances tonight, that in spite of all the transitional issues, that we would be operating on essentially the same schedule that we've seen in the past several years?
Madam President, to the councilmen, I would first say we would be extremely grateful if you did it, and secondly, I would say you would be very much within the framework of when these contracts have been passed in the past. So there would have been no delay in terms of our ability to contract with our providers that continue to provide the services that they are providing.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Forkus, I looked through the ratings, and I did not see any organizations that were rated as being superior, meaning that in all cases, there's noticeable room for Do we have some kind of program where we work for continuous improvement with all the agencies, regardless of the ratings, or do we do that only in the cases of those that get a below-average rating?
Well, actually, this year in this contract that hopefully you will approve, there are benchmarks for outcomes, and we want to be very much outcome-focused. And so an organization that would have a superior rating in the future would, for example, have no allegations of abuse or neglect, and no dispositions, for example, while in that home, we would look at things related to children's educational improvement. So we have a set of benchmarks that we have worked on, and we need a benchmark so that we can move ahead. But absolutely, we work with our providers, there are many conversations about what would be a high-level performer, and we hope that after this year, we will have these benchmark scores, and then we can move into outcome performance contracting.
Mr. Chairman, final question.
Councilman Miller.
Ms. Forkus, what would be the primary couple times, kinds of deficiencies that are out there that have created a situation where none of the organizations that we're currently contracting with received a superior rating?
Where they would have received a superior rating?
Well, Mr. Chairman and Ms. Forkus, I looked at the ratings, and I didn't see any that had received a superior rating.
We have, we have a very high, very high threshold for superior. We have many, many good, solid, above-average providers. And if you ask me what would be the superior, what they would have to do to be superior, you know, I would say that there would have to be 100% of the reports that are due quarterly on time. I would say that they would have no rule violations for any foster parent or residential provider where there were any kind of rule violations. I would say that we would have to see the scales around education, showing that there has been significant improvement, which we are developing those, we don't have those at this point. There would be substantial changes that we would be collecting, that we would feel that that would be a superior organization.
Councilman Greenspan.
Thank you. Chairman Brady, Ms. Forkus, a couple of questions for you. Some of these categories, and this has to do with the rating, what's the high score in each category? Is it 100 points? For example, program quality, what's the high score in the program, what's the highest score in a program quality category?
I'm sorry, I should know this.
That's okay.
It's 100, it looks like 100 points.
And is that, is that the same for all graded categories, 100 points?
It's, yes. All the, all the scores should be the same. The person that does this uses a formatted report, and it's the same for every single provider, how he writes, he and his staff.
Okay, the, the, I'm looking at the two contracts here. One has a number of sustained abuse, neglect, allegations of zero, they received 100. Then somebody has, under the same category, an allegation of one, and they're also rated 100.
Well, providers can have allegations, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a true allegation. And so we get, there are allegations that we do investigate, but many times, they are allegations that are unsubstantiated. So it may vary depending on the investigation that's done. An investigation is done if there's an allegation, obviously, and then there may be, for example, it may not be a substantiated neglect or abuse, but there may be a rule violation. So it kind of varies on whether it's a rule violation or what it is specifically. I can't say that I have all the, I did not come prepared with all the specifics on the, on this, but I certainly would find that information out quickly.
Thank you, Ms., I have a few more questions, if you don't mind. Mr. Chair, Ms. Forkus, what are the grading, in order for somebody to receive superior or above average, what are the, what are the ranges? Like, A typically in school is 90 to 100, a B is 80 to 89, how do these equate?
Well, I know that there's a total of 280 points, and they divide them by the measures, and that's how they come up with, as you can see, the justification of rating points, how they come up with above average. I don't have all the specifics on how he ranks them, how his staff and he ranks, and there's a supervisor, and there's a number of staff who do, who do these.
Okay, Mr. Chair and Ms. Forkus, who rates the, these contracts?
We have a unit of staff that report to J.K. McCray, my deputy over adoptions and providers. He is, that unit is not involved in the selection of anybody, that's all, that's one of the functions that they do, is just to do the ratings and look at, review reports. They do a number of different functions regarding CQI.
Okay, thank you. What, I'm sorry if you would indulge me. Mr. Chairman, the, so effectively, the same group, same organization that rates, and I say organization, is the same organization that handles negotiations. And these, it appears that the contracts, the decision to move forward with the same provider is based largely on their rating. Is that, is that a fair statement?
They do the ratings, they have nothing to do with the actual negotiations of who we contract with. There's a higher, two higher-level managers that they make those recommendations, and of course, I have the ultimate decision on who we contract with.
Is this rating scale so, so specific to, here's where I'm going with this, my concern is, is when you have an organization who selects, rates, and makes the decision or the recommendation to rehire, that there may be the, the lack of appearance of independence. And I am considering the concept of putting the rating system under the inspector general, since they're truly independent, to provide a clear and unobjective view of these contracts, since they are such a major portion of our budget. And that's just a thought, as I'm, as I'm hearing how this, how this works, I, I'm a little concerned that somebody can make a 50 on 3K, or 60, which I would consider substandard. If my son came home with a 60, I'd be very upset, then turn around and make 100 on one category and be classified as above average with a 70 average. So I'd like us to consider some different grading scale or weighting these differently, because it, to me, it seems completely unfair. Here's, here's somebody whose average score is a 70, and they have an above-average rating. So just a general thought, it won't sway my, my opinion on these contracts, but going forward, we need to look at that more carefully.
Some issues that we'll move ahead with our, with our committee when we meet, which will be very soon.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I recognize that different agencies provide different levels of care, so the cost is different per capita. But I'm curious as to the, some of the numbers, and maybe they're recorded improperly, or maybe I'm reading them wrong, but for instance, Pathway for Children, not to exceed $219,000, and they're serving 10 people, 10, 10 children. Parenthesis, family advocates, $279,000, and they have 11 people. Is this intensive stick care, or what's the difference in the numbers here?
Well, it depends on what the organization is, but for example, the two organizations that you're talking about both provide a level of foster care, and they have a variety of different levels, like most of the organizations that you'll see here. We have some organizations that are a combination of foster care and residential, and those are generally the providers that have larger amounts of money. But the way we do it is, it's based on each individual child. We have a tool that we use, and it actually asks, it's, it's something like 500 questions about the child relating to what the child needs. And we level each child based on this tool. And it's a tool that's in the system that has tables behind it, and it adds up all the scores, and then it levels each child. Every organization that we deal with, we have a level of care, various levels, it could be anywhere between level one, which would be basic needs of a child, to a very high level, which would be a child in residential. And then every organization provides a little different service, and they have costs that go into what their per diem is, they all have daily per diems, and those costs, and of course, they're all 4E eligible agencies, and they have sent, sent their costs, their budgets to the state, and that's how those are determined. And so we have rates that have been negotiated a number of years ago. I think I shared with you that none of these organizations have had any kind of rate increase since 2007, although we continue to change their contract, but these, these rates are then attached to each level. And we have a variety of different providers that work with different types of children. I think last time we chatted, I talked about, for example, a child that would be a sex offender would have a completely different rate structure than a child that had educational issues and educational needs and had psychiatric issues. So the, the levels all fall within a range by level, and that's the same for all providers, but it is dependent upon the kinds of services that they provide, and there's different costs.
Yeah, because like Focus in Cleveland, I think it's like $517,000, and they have 10, they have 10 people.
In Focus, for example, is a group home, and it's a group home for, generally, it's all boys, actually. It's in Cleveland, and it's a small group home, and they have a completely different rate structure. The kids that are there, they receive some counseling, but a lot of their counseling is done outside of this organization with counseling centers. So there are different things and different rates and different way that, different types of organizations. For example, a group, a group home care is much less expensive than a residential, a high-level residential provider. And so what we do, how we come up with, we, every quarter, and in preparation for, for the budget, we do an analysis, we do budget projections of the number of children, and I shared with you last time that it varies from year to year. We never really know when we're going to take custody of a child and what that child looks like. That's why we have the tool that measures the, the level of care that's needed. And so what happens is, is we have to make a projection on how many children we think that we will be servicing for that next year, and that's how we come up with the dollars. So what we do is we look at that year, we look at the previous year, we look all, at each quarter, and then we make the projection based on what we think the needs are going to be. And our numbers have varied from year to year in, in terms of children and family services, and how many children have come into custody. 10 years ago, we had 6,600 children in our custody. Today, we have 9, we have about 1,907 children in our custody, so it varies, and we have to make that projection.
And one last question for Adoption Network Cleveland.
Yes.
It's $315,000. What kind of recruiting services do you do?
That's a very different organization. They are not an organization that provide foster care.
I know, yeah.
So you know that.
Right.
Okay, so that particular organization, they work with families that are interested in adopting. They are, they do a tremendous amount of work, which is our CRC work, which they help us find prospective adoptive parents for very, very difficult children that the agency has not had any luck finding people. So they have helped us with a critical service, they do navigation work, and they really work with our older teens, so there's a tremendous amount of work that's done.
Yeah, because I'd be curious to find, at the end of the year, how many children they actually assist in, in placing.
I don't have that, but I'd be happy to get it, get it for you.
I mean, I think that would be the advantage of Mr. Brady's committee, that in the next six months or so, that we'll have an opportunity to ask these questions in depth, you know, prior to such as work, these works that we've been doing committee.
Other questions by members of the council this evening?
Brady, may I just add one thing?
Sure, certainly.
Just to correct a, I believe, a typo on the, on the agenda in item 16, Presley Ridge, I think there's an extra three sets of zeros, so we are not, we are not contracting with them for 1.5 billion.
Oh, yeah.
Dollars, we are contracting with them for 1.5 million dollars. We are contracting with them for $1.5 million, and I apologize for the error. I'll check and see if it's in the actual legislation.
I'm relieved.
So am I.
Councilman Germana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, in the rating under these substantiated abuse, neglect allegations, you know, you're just flipping through and looking at them. And, you know, I can understand in most one, there's one allegation, substantiated allegation, you get a score of 80. But then, I've seen some where there's six substantiated allegations, and they get 100. And I have in one case of zero allegations, and they get a score of 80. I'm just wondering what the consistency of the scoring is. And, you know, certainly, you know, I respect the evaluation. I mean, these are certainly quality institutions, but, and I would just like to know how they quantify that, because there's, there's got to be more than what we're seeing here. If, you know, an organization has six allegations, substantiated allegations, and they get 100%, and then someone that's got zero gets a 80%, you know, I think there should be some uniformity in, in the grading. So, thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to give a comment that, when we discussed this at the last meeting, that we have, these contracts have all been presented to us on a nine-month basis, as opposed to a one-year. And the reason that we're doing that is so that we can have an opportunity to reevaluate the entire process. And so, I'm looking forward that this is going to your committee, so that all these things that we're discussing now can really be talked about in a, in a, in-depth manner, and so we can really shore up this process and make sure that we're, we have the best possible providers working on behalf of the children in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rogers. You know, certainly, what we find ourselves, we find ourselves on the wrong end. As a legislative body, we're on the wrong end of this budget process. The process is over. We're up against deadlines. These contracts expired at the end of the year. It's a consequence of the transition from one, from the old government to the new. In the past, commissioners would have been aware of these issues before this, this point in time. Next January, or next winter, we'll have been through a very rigorous process, not to mention the fact that these are only nine-month contracts. I would hope to have an unprecedented approach to taking a look at Health and Human Services along with the administration and holding budget hearings. I've had some discussions with Councilman Miller, the chairman of finance, about having separate budget hearings for Health and Human Services to take as long as we need to go through a budget process that probably hasn't occurred in years in this county around these issues. I think tonight, we find ourselves in a position of needing to, you know, keep our commitment to the children of Cuyahoga County and, and to move forward. But we will get our chance as a council and as a, and as a committee to work together with the administration to really evaluate the best way to go forward. So, we'd very much appreciate the council's support tonight. Yes, Councilman?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, a couple of points that were raised at the last, when we look at the commonality of ownership, that I believe we initially didn't think there were any, but there is. And when you look through, there also is a commonality of score for that same organization, which concerns me. When you look at that, at least it appears that way, that that same organization scores relatively on the lower side on both the common, common ownership out there. So, I think that we ought to make sure that when we're looking at it, that it, that if an organization makes it through on one side scoring, but the other side of a common ownership is one in which maybe it would not pass the mustard, I think we need to look at the totality of that organization, not just a particular piece. And the other question is, if we're doing a nine-month, is there any advantage to considering, from a contractual standpoint, to be looking at a 15-month or the next contract? And I assume that that's something you're, you're talking about, both from the beneficial side to us as the recipients of the service, and probably for the service provider. It might make a stronger competitive position for both sides. But I think when you start talking about a 15-month business contract, it can benefit both parties in regards to that. So, I think it might be something we might want to consider if it hasn't already been considered.
Mr. Chairman and the Councilmen, we have discussed that issue. The, the challenge for us will be, of course, that when we put the, when we make the recommendation to the county executive that would then come over to you for those new contracts, we will only have the remaining budget for the remainder of the year. So, we may have to break it up into a three-month contract with an option to extend for an additional 12 months once the budget's in place. Because the, our ability is only to, to essentially encumber money that's already been budgeted. So, that'll, that will be the challenge that we'll try to work out during our discussions internally on the administration's side and with, and with you all.
Councilman Schron.
Sounds like an accounting issue that we ought to figure out from a good business practice, that let's, let's not make sure that the, a good business practice doesn't get caught in the way of also what the best service is for our kids, too.
I appreciate your recommendations. I want to, from my own point of view, as the chairperson of the committee, I want to be sure that nothing interferes with our ability to have a thorough conversation about the future of Health and Human Services in the county. And I know the Transition Committee came up with quite a few recommendations as well. And so, I'd like, you know, certainly, to work very closely with this, with this administration to see what we can do to improve how we go about delivering services for the people of Cuyahoga County. And thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for all your time over the last 10 days.
Absolutely.
Any other questions by the committee?
Mr. Chair, I just have one. I apologize. Is it, is it, to either of the, is it customary, in traditional businesses, customary to provide incentive bonuses for organizations that outperform the contract? If the inspector general engages in the rating process and determines that a service provider is performing, is exceeding expectations, is in the, in the superior category, is it customary in this field, and I don't know the answer, that's why I'm asking the question, to provide incentive bonuses for organizations that provide a higher-quality service for the children that are under their care? Have you heard of that before?
Not in this county.
Okay. Just a recommendation.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, to the Councilmen, that we have had performance-based contracts in the past where you get your final, you get your final portion of money if you've succeeded at 100%. So, I think there probably are ways for us to use the process that we're talking about in terms of planning to try to incorporate those kind of ideas into this process.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairperson?
All right. Is there any other questions on any other of the items on the agenda, or any other Do we have any miscellaneous business?
Madam President, at our last work session, I brought up the idea of providing free parking for members of the public that wish to attend our 6:00 meetings, and I'm wondering if there's been any action on that.
I did, excuse me, I did talk briefly with Jay Ross, and we didn't come to any final conclusion. I think you need to do some work internally to see how we could do that. But with it, the concept was, we were talking about possibly printing off some passes that we could distribute here that would reflect a specific timeframe of between, you know, 5:00 and 8:00 at night on Tuesday evenings. So, when you go to leave, you could present that pass. But we didn't come to any final decision on that, but we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President? It was referred to the Public Works Committee, which is tomorrow at 2:00, and we can discuss it further at that time.
All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Yes, Mr. Miller?
I would just bring to everybody's attention that there's going to be a legislation introduced in first reading tonight that would create permanent rules for the county council. It would be a modest update of the rules that we passed on January 3rd, and, and that proposal is going to be referred to committee, and we'll do further work on it, but we're going to start that process. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to commend Mr. Miller for the extensive amount of work that he's done on those rules. He's really done an outstanding job.
Thank you.
I can't believe we actually got done early. For those who are, may not stay for a regular meeting, we have a number of committee meetings. We all signed up for a part-time job, but we are sadly mistaken about this. Let's see, tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., we will have Human Resources at 10:00. Wednesday, the 9th, at 2:00 will be Public Works. On the 10th, at 2:00, 9:00, I'm sorry, we have an ad hoc committee on the Board of Revision will be interviewing some candidates. On Monday, the 14th, we'll have Public Safety at 11:00. On Monday, the 14th, at 1:00, Finance and Budget. On the 14th, at 3:00, Economic Development. We are having a special meeting on the 15th at 4:00. And we probably will, we have a number of items that we were not, could not wait for the meeting on the 22nd. On the 17th, at 1:00, we have Health and Human Services. And I know, we have not received an official notification, but we have, from the media, I understand that there has been an appointment for the law director, and we are tentatively setting a confirmation hearing for the possible law director on the 17th at 9:00, subject to his availability. So, we have lots of things on the agenda.
Madam President?
Yes. Did I miss something, Mr. Miller?
No, but I would just share with the public that it, that would not be my intent to hold a Finance and Budgeting Committee meeting on the 14th unless the president of council were to refer the resolution that, that Councilwoman Conwell is introducing on the estate tax to my committee, which I'm actually not expecting. But if, but unless that were to occur, I'm not planning to, to hold a meeting next Monday. It would be on the 28th, would be the next meeting.
Okay. All right, we'll see what happens. I'm Mr. Schron.
Madam President, the, the economic development that's marked on the 14th, because I believe that the county executive is going to be referring some matters to our committee, we're going to probably be holding that on the 22nd with proper notice. We're just trying to find a time slot right now to hold that. And so, we're trying to wrestle with that, because I know that there is discussion with the Deputy Economic Director from the Executive's Office to bring forth issue on the 15th, so that can come before here and then be referred out to our committee. So, there will not be a meeting on the 14th for Economic Development.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, it's always best to take a look at the county's website, just in case there are any changes, because all meetings are subject to change.
All right, is there anything further, then?
I just knew how popular the Economic Development Committee would be, and how people are going to be planning their schedules around that, so I just wanted to make sure I didn't want to burst into a buzz-bubble.
Okay. All right, is anything further for the good of the order, Mr. Germana?
Do we have any public comment? I'm just wondering if you asked for a public comment.
I don't know, we just have, that's just a work session, but if there is any public comment, we have the time, and we certainly would be available. Does anyone have any public comment they'd like to make? All right, is there a motion to adjourn the work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00? All right, thank you.